The B E A and Board of School Trustees Agreement. So just kind of allow a hearing for any public comments.
Anybody have any comments?
Go away a couple minutes please or do the last one.
I have comments. I used to be the expert on the contract, but I haven't looked at one in a long time. But I did read through it. But I like how it's now instead of having like two paragraphs to explain something, there's two sentences that encompass all the stuff they used to just add in and throw it in there and then all the stuff that was crossed out.
Okay.
So.
We did reformat it this year.
More abbreviated.
Yes.
And clearer.
So what will happen is tonight during our regular meeting, it will be up for approval then.
We'll have some things up here that because we're live.
We can say that, yeah, we're live, yes. It's a two-year contract. The salary range forty-six, five seventy-five for the beginning teachers. This is all at the bachelor level. And then hides end is seventy-one, seven twenty-six. We did a three percent increase on the extracurricular schedule. And it does include the contract, the salary grid does include an early literacy endorsement. And that's added because of the science of reading endorsement that's now required of our elementary teachers. Those are just some highlights. The contract itself has been on the website.
If there's no comments at this time, we'll go ahead and enter the meeting, the public hearing.
All right.
We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. You could stand and please join me for the pledge of no silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I will go ahead and recognize that we do have a quorum. We have Holly, I'm going to go ahead and roll call kind of thing since we are live. We have Holly Cho, Chris Dalton, Amy Cott Camp, and Scott Robertson here this evening. And I would like to get a motion for addition to the agenda. It would be adding an E fourteen to the agenda, and that's for consideration to approve an addendum to the athletic handbook. Just some language that's already there, but just adding it to other parts to make it more consistent throughout the handbook. If I can get a motion for that, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
Okay. No other addendums to be added? Any questions on that? All right, all those in favor for adding the item E fourteen to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And this is the time that audience can speak on agenda items. Non-agenda items, we'll open it back up at the end of the meeting. And we're checking now to see, does it look like we have anyone signed up? So we'll proceed to our routine matters. And it's the B one, the minutes of our, we had several different things here, so bear in mind. We have minutes of the teacher contract public hearing we had on September eighth, and the minutes of a budgetary public hearing that we also had on September eighth, and minutes of our regular meeting on September eighth, and a special board meeting and executive session on September twenty-sixth, and minutes of a tentative agreement public hearing of October eighth with the B E A on the eighth of twenty-five. I can get a motion for those?
I'll make a motion to approve all the minutes previously listed.
All right. Any questions on those? Comments, concerns? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of our September eighth meetings and our September twenty-sixth meeting along with the October eighth meeting, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. B two is our vouchers and financial reports. And just getting a motion to approve the vouchers and financial reports of two million six hundred and four thousand eight hundred fifty-one and forty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers and financial reports.
A second.
Okay. Tracy, anything to add or?
Nope, just lots and lots of supplies on this one, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor for approving the vouchers and financial reports for the month, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And our communications is the donations. And we'll start off with Benton Central. And they had, Spanish Club had a donation of sixty-eight dollars. The JAG cap, N B P A class of twenty-six, and Helping Hands had a shareable donation of fifteen hundred. Athletic Boys Wrestling, five hundred, another JAG of twenty-seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then Choir of four thirty-seven, FFA, four twenty-three ninety-nine. And then Student Activities at B C for three hundred, and FFA for five hundred. So lots of donations this month. We appreciate all of those. And on Prairie Crossing donations, we had a twenty-five hundred dollar donation, a two hundred and eighty dollar donation that'll go for student lunch accounts, and another hundred dollar donation and another lunch balance account donation for twenty-two seventy-five and twelve fifty at Prairie Crossing this month. So thank you again for those. Otterman had a two hundred dollar for the Student Activities donation, so thank you for Otterman's donation as well. I think that was all of them right, yes. Okay, then we had our fundraiser update, busy fundraising time. It looks like our main one's going on, sixth grade is kind of doing an ongoing ice cream sale at Prairie Crossing, I believe that they do for Tecumseh, if I remember right. And then they are doing, Otterman's doing a Student Council Halloween treat, little fundraiser for this month. And then FFA fruit sales are starting the third of November, and those will end on the fourteenth of November. Laundry detergent sales for B P A, that will start the fourteenth, so tomorrow, was that today? It's starting tomorrow. And that'll go for about a month. And there's some bake sales the Spanish Club will be having, and it looks like the art program's doing cookies in canvas. They have several dates that they'll be doing that for being able to use for field trips and guest speakers and whatnot for art. And Otterman has a Flag My Yard that they're doing first week in November for helping with student scholarship in Riley Hospital. That's what we have for our month. C four, curriculum update, oh, sorry, skip C three, principal update.
We have Mr. Hall's here tonight.
Okay, yep, all right, athletic is going to share an update.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to spend a few minutes of time here to kind of update you on what's been going on athletically. As we wrap up the fall season here, I'm happy to report that we've had eighty-two male and eighty-six female athletes, student athletes involved in our fall programs, and a hundred and eight students competing at the junior high level. Our participation numbers remain strong and continue to reflect the health of our athletic programs. Several teams have finished their seasons. That would be boys tennis, girls golf, and the soccer, boys and girls soccer, while volleyball, football, and cross country are entering postseason this week and next. So they will continue their postseason competitions. We had over the fall, twenty-two student athletes that have earned all-conference honors and another ten that received honorable mentions. So very strong showing for our school. Our boys tennis team under first-year coach Nick Nasos had an outstanding season. They were eighteen and four, second in the conference, and were sectional finalists, lost to Harrison. There, our girls volleyball program continues to show strong competition with our conference opponents. They captured their fourth straight Hoosier Conference title, and it's the fifth in the last six years for them. Continuing an incredible run of success conference-wide. They start conference, or excuse me, sectional play this Thursday at North Montgomery. And our boys soccer team had a record-setting season with thirteen wins, the most in program history, and reached the sectional finals this past weekend, lost, eventually lost to West Lafayette, but had a tremendous season there. We've also received tremendous feedback on the new track facility from opposing schools that have visited. We hosted an event out there with a bison stampede over the cross-country season, and just an outpouring of support and comments as well as community members. So it's become a great conversation piece and sense of pride for us at the high school. Another highlight this season, which I gave all of you a copy, this is something new that we brought to the athletic program this fall, kind of tag-teamed this with Ms. Taylor's classes, and they did a tremendous job. Everything you see is layout by the department and all kid-generated stuff there. So it was a fantastic first try, and we'll do another one in the winter and then another one in the spring. And then finally, as you all know, Coach Andy Standifer, our head football coach, tendered his resignation on September twenty-second. Since then, Mr. Robb and I have met with some key stakeholders, including past coaches, players, and the youth program coaches. So all giving us input as to what they would like to see the program's direction. Once the postseason ends here, so sectional comes up, we have parent night this weekend, and then sectional starts, once our postseason run ends, what we plan to do is post the coaching position and then conduct interviews with our football committee that will assemble. And then once we have identified an appropriate candidate, we'll bring that to the board for recommendation. So overall, it's been a very successful fall season marked by high participation, strong performances, and continued growth in all of our programs. So, any questions?
This program's amazing.
Yeah, this is a great idea, a collaboration between your department and her class. This is awesome.
We were very pleased with it. What we did was we kind of got everybody together as a media day, so to speak, and took all the pictures. Their kids, or the classes, they were involved in that over the summer and came in on their own time, took a lot of those pictures, and they did the layout. So very, very pleased with it.
Did we print these or did we send it to be printed?
We had a company in Lafayette that printed those for us.
So our kids designed it?
Yeah, Carrie and I did the advertising, and then the kids did all the layout for it. So we hope to gain a little bit more in the advertising part and just continue to make it better each time we do it, so.
Now, are these available like at the games?
Those are available at the games, and then we'll have them out in the community as well, some key locations. So if it's okay, I'd like to leave some here for people that visit and the school board.
Yeah, the quality is great, and the layout is very uniform, and I like that.
How long has it been since we've had an athletic booklet like that?
Well, they used to do a similar product. The Benton Review used to do a similar product like that for us several years ago, but this is the first attempt that I've had at doing something like this. And it's kind of just as a thing where Ms. Taylor and I were talking, and we got to brainstorming, and then it came to fruition, so. I mean, I have some from the seventies, so.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything like that for years.
I'm glad, you know, you keep stuff.
I do, I keep all kinds of crap.
I do, too. My kids are going to love it someday.
And a nice update, thank you for the update this season.
Good participation and.
And we will hold you to it. If you need to take off, you go right ahead.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And then C four is the curriculum update, and Miss Scherz here for that.
Good evening, how's everyone doing tonight? Good, good. We had a busy day today, Benton Community. We had coaches from the reading program, C K L A, meeting with K through two in the morning, and everybody else was up at the central with Dr. Lori De Sultis. The Behavior Grant was able to purchase and have her come and speak to our teachers. She's a professor from Butler who travels internationally and speaks, and she talked with us about neurodiversity and neuroscience in education. And I think one of the teachers said, one of her comments that was really lasting was... had a, a record-setting season with thirteen wins, uh, the most in program history, and reached the sectional finals, uh, this past weekend, lost, uh, eventually lost to West Lafayette, uh, but had a tremendous, uh, season there. We've also received, uh, tremendous, um, feedback on the new track facility, uh, from opposing schools that have visited. Um, we hosted an event out there with a bison stampede over the cross-country season, and uh, just, just an outpouring of, uh, support and comments, uh, as well as community members, so it's become a, a, a great conversation piece and, and sense of pride for us at the high school. Uh, another highlight, uh, this season, which I gave all of you a copy, um, this is something new that we brought to the, um, athletic program this fall, um, kind of tag-team this with, uh, Ms. Taylor's classes, and they did a tremendous job. Um, everything you see is, uh, layout by the, the, uh, department, and all kid-generated stuff there, so, um, it's, uh, was a fantastic first try, and we'll do another one in the winter, and then another one in the spring. Um, and then finally, as you, uh, all know, Coach Andy Standifer, our, our head football coach, uh, tendered his res- resignation on September twenty-second. Uh, since then, Mr. Rob and I have, uh, met with some key stakeholders, including past coaches, uh, players, and, um, the youth program coaches, so, um, all giving us input, uh, as to what they would like to see, uh, the program's direction. Uh, once this, the postseason ends here, so sectional comes up, we have parent night this weekend, and then sectional starts, once our postseason run ends, uh, what we plan to do is post the, the coaching position, um, and then conduct, conduct interviews with our football committee that will assemble, and then, once we have identified a appropriate candidate, we'll bring that to the board for recommendation. So, overall, it's been a very successful fall, uh, season, marked by high participation, strong performances, and continued growth in all of our programs, so, any questions?
This program's amazing.
Yeah, this is, this is a great idea, and collaboration between your department and her class, this is awesome.
We, we were very pleased with it. What we did was, we kind of, uh, got everybody together as a media day, so to speak, and took all the pictures, their kids, or the classes, um, they were involved in that over the summer, and came in on their own time, took a lot of those pictures, and they did the layout, so, very, very pleased with it, so.
Do we, did we print these, or did we send it to be printed?
We had a, a company in Lafayette that printed those for us.
So our kids designed it?
Yeah, Carrie and I did the advertising, um, and then the kids did all the layout for it, so, we hope to gain a little bit more in the advertising part, and, and just continue to make it, uh, better each time we do it, so.
Now, are these available, like, at the games?
Those are available at the games, and then we'll have them out in the community as well, some, some key locations, so, if it's okay, I'd like to leave some here for people that visit, and, yeah, the school board.
Yeah, the, the quality is great, and it, the layout, it's, it's very uniform, and I like that.
How long has it been since we've had a, an athletic booklet like that?
Well, they, they used to do a similar product, uh, the Benton Review used to do a, a similar product like that for us several years ago, but this is the first attempt that I've had at doing something like this, and it's kind of just as a, a, a thing where Ms. Taylor and I were talking, and we got to brainstorming, and then it came to fruition, so, I mean, I have some from the seventies, so, yeah, I haven't seen anything like that for years. Yeah.
I'm glad, you know, you, you keep stuff.
I do, I keep all kinds of crap.
I, I do too. My kids are gonna love it someday.
And a nice update, thank you for the update this season.
Yes, thank you.
Good participation in.
And we will hold you to it, if you need to take off, you go right ahead.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
And then C four is the curriculum update, and, um, this is the chair's here for that.
Good evening, how's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Good, good, we had a busy day today, uh, Benton Community, we, um, had coaches from the reading program, CKLA, meeting with K through two in the morning, and everybody else was up at Benton Central with Dr. Lori DeSultis, the, um, behavior grant was able to purchase, um, and have her come and speak to our teachers. She's, um, a professor from Butler who travels internationally and speaks, and she talked with us about, um, neurodiversity and neuroscience in education. And, um, I think one of the teachers said, one of her comments that was really lasting was, um, "An unregulated teacher can't regulate a student, any students." So, just thinking about, um, the approach, and we're really just kind of building a ground floor with this, um, s- uh, thinking about how we'll deal with behaviors that we have from students in the best way. And so, um, we're glad to have her with us, and we do have more upcoming PD, Katie Agherance is our CKLA, or is our conscious discipline coach, and she's the one doing our coaching Zooms in the morning and afternoon, weekly, I gave you that schedule before, and then she is coming in person in November, she will be here on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. She'll be at Otterman all day on the eighteenth, and Benton Central all day on the nineteenth, and Prairie Crossing all day on, um, the twentieth. And then, on the twentieth, that Wednesday night, we'll be advertising it, but she is going to have a parent night and talk with, um, parents about some of the concepts that she's discussing with teachers, so, um, you know, I grew up with a fifties dad, so, and I, he was very kind, but I also know that he believed in, um, to change your behavior, you had to have some pain, not necessarily a lot of pain, but, you know, kind of the, um, and the way that we discipline today, um, has changed, our mindset has changed as far as, um, and, and our teachers don't have one student that maybe is having a little disruptive behavior, they seem to have a lot of students that, um, they're, they're needing strategies to deal with that, so, we're excited to have Katie. Katie also would like to do something on Monday and Tuesday night, where we, um, open it up and she has dinner, she might have dinner at the country club, and then people would come and have dinner with her, and she could, she would talk, and maybe, maybe even, uh, Tuesday night at the Hundred Mile House now that it's open again, so, um, getting, uh, she, she said she's done that before in other districts that she's visited, so that's something we're looking at.
I, uh, letting the community know that is important, so if, if and when you have the information, I think Ms. Taylor's class could maybe do a, a, a social media post or a video, if you'd like, I mean, they're always looking for stuff to do.
That would be great.
So if you want to do that, we can.
Okay, yeah, Katie would even Zoom for that, we could get her in.
Good, good.
Yeah. Um, and then she'll be in virtual coaching again in December. We do have another two-hour delay this semester, which is on November tenth, um, that November tenth day, um, teachers in the elementary schools will be, um, having a Zoom to reconnect them again with their counterparts at the other school for a brief time, and then meeting as teams, and working on, um, troubleshooting, looking at data, and, um, collaborating, and then the high school, same thing. Um, as far as assessments are going right now, we are still finishing up I-Learn testing, really just at Prairie Crossing, and then, uh, tomorrow's the PSAT, and we are right in it, we are in the midst of all of it right now, so, um, we appreciate your support, though, with the professional development. I think that, um, if you talk to anyone about the reading program, they'll tell you that the days that we had to prepare have helped, um, it is still a challenge, it's our first year, and so, um, they're, they're working diligently on keeping their heads above water for the preparation for that. I did want to bring you, um, this is something that was shared today, today we have these stations at Benton Central, and, um, just take my oxygen out. Um, Mr. Whitelove and Mrs. Fitch ran a station in the active learning lab, they were talking about the active learning lab itself, and getting people to come and check it out, and also working with N.L. students. And then Mrs. Doyle and Mrs. Morales ran a station in Mrs. Doyle's room about brain breaks and, um, de-escalation, and just everyday use of, um, focused attention devices that they use in their own classrooms. And then, in the library, we talked about data, which I'll be sharing more with you about that, um, kind of, uh, all the areas where we're seeing growth, we're really seeing a lot of growth in our seventh and eighth grade math, um, so we're excited about that with the NWEA and with the first round of the I-Learn, so that's great, great news, but, um, in our data session, we shared data, we shared some instructional strategies, um, this is a, a document that was shared with us at Wabash Valley, it's from John Hattie, and you can see in the little box, it says that, um, they looked at eighty thousand, or eighty thousand studies involving three hundred million students, so, you know, it's really difficult in education, people will say, "Well, this is a research-based practice," but what was the research? Um, and so this is, um, a compiling of a lot of the research and studies that have taken place, and so I thought you might find it interesting to look at the category, um, for school, um, you'll notice that the dark blue and the light blue are really the ones that will accelerate student achievement. Um, and so we were looking at, in our group, we were looking at instructional strategies, and just pulling out a couple of what are deemed to be the most effective, and talking about how we could use those in our classes, but, so you can take a look at this, you can keep that, and, um, but as board members, I know, just looking at what's happening for our students, and in our classrooms, and with our parents, and our students, these, these factors, um, can play a part, and it's nice to see the, the categories that are, um, supporting student achievement, and a lot of them we have in place and headed in the right direction. Okay, so.
I want to thank you, um, for the, this is just the second year with our PD, and your intentionality and the scheduling, you, you can tell that the, the sessions are meaningful, and the collaboration is great, and, you know, I, I went over today, and even the collaboration of everybody eating lunch is great, so, thank you, because I know it's, it's hard work.
And we thank our parents, too, I know e-learning days are not easy, so, um, but to have those speakers, um, that share international workshops, and to have our CKLA coach to talk with teachers, especially about pacing right now, is very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, and we have, we'll move on to our C five, the projects and facilities update.
Okay, yeah, so, just an update on projects in our buildings, um, the athletic storage annex and the Otterman Elementary, uh, classroom slash dining space, that site work has begun, so, um, excavating, demolition, to some extent, of the tennis, the old tennis courts, uh, there's fencing around for the safety, so that work has begun, and that's exciting. Um, I, we do have a, a project meeting tomorrow, and I believe those will happen, uh, weekly, and so I'll attend that, so I can keep you abreast. Um, the waterhouse, uh, the repairs will occur over fall break, that was when it was scheduled to, and it just didn't last, and hence that day we had to miss, so, um, hopefully we can get that repaired. The, uh, one thing that I wanted to just communicate now, and let you know, um, we've, we've talked about it a little bit as a board, but it's time to start, uh, thinking about this, because the athletic storage annex building is, is starting, we have this building here in Fowler, and, and some people don't even know we own it, it's just right down the street here. It's not climate-controlled, it's not in the best condition, and it's not centrally located anymore, there's no school here, and so when we get those pole vault pits, and we had to br- bring them back and forth, this is why we wanted that athletic storage annex. It is time for us to discuss what we want to do with that, and selling it could have some advantages, and so what we will start doing is, is some work sessions, and I will bring information about that process, the pros and cons to that, so I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, I know we've talked about it before, but it's, it's time for us to start talking about it, probably emptying it, and so when that's available in July, we could really do something with that. Um.
All that stuff.
All that stuff.
Yes. Let's see, uh, the underground fuel tanks, this is something that we have spoken about, uh, in the last year as a board, and, uh, we, we want to discuss this. Those current fuel tanks for the buses, there's two of them, there's, there's one here, and then there's one out at B.C., um, they are aging. Now, they're fine now, but they are aging, and so we need to explore the removal of those and replacing those, so that just happens every twenty to thirty years for school corporations. There are advantages and disadvantages to do those tanks, right now they're currently underground, should they be above brand, and there are pros and cons, uh, environmental issues and, and safety issues, and then there are mitigation issues to discuss with our insurance agent, and it's, it's time to discuss that. So I do have a contact with a company who does removal and replacement, and again, I think it's time for us to begin exploring that, and so, and again, at a work session. I think our next work session will be on facilities and, and, and building things that we need to do, so all I'm trying to do is just bring that to the forefront, and let people know it's on our radar. So that's all I have for projects and facilities.
And then meeting the board at nine thirty, Otterman, right?
Is it nine thirty or nine?
I had it down, right, thirty, I might not be there.
Yes, I had it for ten, so nine thirty, safe, yes. It seemed like I thought it was nine hundred. It was sort of Otterman and then no rule.
We don't have a work session scheduled yet, right?
No, we don't, but I think we have some, several topics set up.
All right, so we will go ahead and move into our new business, and we're, go ahead and start with E one, and that is our, um, monthly considering, consideration of the staff report and other personnel items, if I can get a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to consider normal staff report items.
I'll second. All right, and any discussions, questions, right? All those in favor for approving, um, the staff report and personnel items, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Here, all right. Um, E two, we will, um, have our consideration for approval of the overnight out-of-state field trip for the FFA, um, for a soil judging competition in Huntington, Indiana, October seventeenth to eighteenth. Have someone make a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the following field trip request for the FFA team to the state soil judging competition in Huntington County, Indiana, on October seventeenth to the eighteenth.
I'll second. Any questions on that? All right, all those in favor for approving the FFA field trip on October seventeenth to the eighteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. E three is the, um, consideration for approval of the advertised twenty-twenty-six budget.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the advertised twenty-twenty-six budget.
I'll second. Okay, you got it. All right. Anything you need to add, or do you have any?
Um, no, just that, you know, once, those advertised, uh, budgets and tax levies are all inflated, they will be reduced when we go through our seventeen-eighty-two process, so.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the advertised twenty-twenty-six budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. E four is our consideration of the approval for a resolution, um, to reduce, and this was something new this year, correct?
Nope.
This is so different, this is, okay, the next one, all right, there is one. Okay, so if I can get a motion for approving the resolution to reduce.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of resolution to reduce.
I'll second. Do you want to kind of explain that?
Yeah, so this basically gives myself and Dr. Zoop and the, um, authority to reduce those budgets that are advertised, and to make corrections to the revenue, because we have, you know, when we have to advertise, we advertise in advance of when we have certain information, like our ADM counts and those things, so, this resolution allows us to make those changes. We can't go higher than what we advertise, but we can reduce those by this resolution.
All those in favor for approving the resolution to reduce, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. E five is the, um, consideration for the approval of the ECA Student Activity Fund Use Policy.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the ECA Student Activity Fund Use Policy.
I'll second. And, um, this one was the new one.
That was the new one, it's just, uh, State Board of Accounts, they want to make sure that there's a resolution that says we can use it for those registrations, yeah.
All right, all those in favor for approving the ECA Student Activity Fund Use Policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And then our E six is the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year calendar, if I can get a motion for considering that approval.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, and twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight school year calendars.
I'll second.
All right, um, any questions on that?
Thank you for all the work.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks for.
Put that calendar together, build them, and that's great, appreciate it.
I know there's a lot of moving parts to the starting calendar, and it's not perfect for anyone, so, you just gotta do it, and hope for the best. All right. Um, all those in favor for approving the twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. E seven is the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-seven contract between BEA and the, um, Board of Trustees for the July one, twenty-five through June, it's got a two-year contract, June thirtieth of twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-seven contract between the BEA and the Board of Trustees for July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
I'll second.
And the, um, and there's a little bit of a breakdown of it, and that's also what we had our public hearing for, so we kind of already, um, up to par on that, um, from our meeting just before this. So, um, all those in favor for approving the contract between BEA and, um, the BCSC Board of Trustees for July twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And, um, E eight is the approval of the updated job description for the special education teacher.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the updated job description for the special education teachers.
I will second.
I'll just add that, for the next few items here, these are because of the new contract, so what we're doing is matching language and updating everything else because of this, so, um, yeah.
And all those in favor for, um, approving the updated job description for the special ed, uh, teachers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, well, we have some opens right now, still for, are we?
We do.
Okay, are they internal, right now, are they?
No, they're open, so, you know, anybody.
Yes, okay, so, yes, we are still looking for a position to be filled for the corporations that.
Two of them, two of them, sorry, one at each elementary.
Okay. All right, E nine is the consideration, oh, yes, did we, we did that?
Yeah.
All right. E nine is the consideration for approval of the updated classified handbook and additional job category benefit information that will be effective July one of twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the updated classified handbook and additional job category slash benefit information, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
And, um, just, because I think I can remember, because we, did we kind of change from classified employee, is that wording different?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to kind of explain that, just?
Well, we changed it from, you know, you approved the new handbook that was reformatted in August, when we changed all, everything that said non-certified, the classified.
I just wanted to, that way we can be reminded of the, I don't know what you changed, okay, because we called that for so long. All right, uh, Amy, you, you, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, sorry, all right, okay. And any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor for approving the updated classified handbook and additional job category benefit information for, um, July first of twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, E ten is the consideration for approval of the updated administrator's handbook that will also be effective July one of twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the updated administrator's handbook effective July first of twenty-twenty-five.
I will second. All right, I think there was any other, um, questions, discussions before? All right, all those in favor for considering the approval?
All right, all those in favor for considering the approval of the updated administrative, administrator's handbook effective July one, twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's Carrie, and we'll move to E eleven. This is the consideration for approval of the salary increase for classified staff for July one, twenty-five and July one to twenty-six.
I'll consider, I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the salary increase for classified staff for July first, twenty twenty-five, July first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
All right, any questions? I, I like we're hopefully being more competitive and, and retain and, um, retain and, what's it called? For people and that's the word, it's a track, thank you. All right, all those in favor for approving the salary increase for classified staff July one, twenty twenty-five to July one, twenty twenty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And, um, next is our E twelve, another approval of the salary increase. This is for administrators and directors for July one of twenty twenty-five and July one of two, July, yes, no, and, July one of twenty twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the salary increase for administrators and directors for July first, twenty twenty-five and July first through, and, sorry, July first of twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
And that matches the two-year contract with the BEA. And, um, thank you for the breakdown of like how we came up with that. I think it helps for, you know, tracking really. Okay. All those in favor for considering the approval of the salary increase for administrators and directors for July first of twenty twenty-five and July first of twenty twenty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Almost there. E thirteen is consideration for the approval of the updated substitute wage scales.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the updated substitute wage scale.
I'll second.
I have a question on that. I realize, um, do a lot of our substitutes have permits or is it kind of?
They all have to.
It's like, and it's like every two years, they renew it or?
They do expire, but I do not remember how long they last, so.
I would say at least five years.
Do we help like pay for the, or is it like, I'm not sure how that works. I didn't, yeah.
On the, uh, for the retired teachers, do they have to have a valid teaching license?
They have to.
Because they'll expire at some point.
Right, right. They, they do and, or they can get the substitute license.
Okay, yeah.
So, if they get the substitute license, does that still put them in the retired teacher?
I say, because the way it reads, it says BCSC retired teacher, so it doesn't say.
No matter what kind of permit you have.
Right, yeah, so they get kind of that.
Okay.
But if it wasn't a retired teacher from?
If they wasn't a retired teacher from us, it has to be a retired teacher from us, not from TSD or somewhere else.
We're trying to encourage.
Just never. Get the itch?
No, not yet.
He's just checking his options.
You gotta wait for your release, right?
Never close the door.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of approving the updated substitute wage scales, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And this is our last one, it's the, um, added, um, item to the agenda, E fourteen, and that is it for consideration of the approval of the athletic handbook addendum.
Oh, make a motion to accept the athletic handbook changes.
I'll second.
All right. And, um, this is just the proposed change to the athletic handbook. Um, again, it's not altering anything that's already, um, existing in our protocols or procedures, simply aiming to just kind of incorporate the code of conduct language without the, um, handbook and to make it more clear and facilitate the application of that throughout the handbook. So, all those in favor for making that addendum and approving the athletic addendum, handbook addendum, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and this is when we open back up for non-agenda public comments, but still no one has came in since we checked it last, so we are good on public comments. Um, any board member, superintendent comments?
I, I do. Um, one thing that's not up here is that I do, the, the negotiations process can be time-consuming and lengthy. Um, so I do want to thank our two board representatives, Scott and Holly, for your help. Uh, the team did a great job, Monica and her team, the BEA, did great. Um, but here in the last few days, I know she's not going to like this for me, but all of those things that were approved that were related to updating the salary schedules, that's a lot of work in the last five days, so thank you for getting that ready because now we can get the payroll going and everybody will be able to, um, to enjoy that, that increase. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then I just wanted to emphasize parent teacher conferences tomorrow, uh, afternoon or evening time, whether that would be phone or in-person meetings or virtual or notes. And then fall break, well-deserved by every employee here and every student, uh, October seventeenth and twentieth, so. Thank you.
Yeah, and good luck to the athletes that are getting ready to perform and they're, or still not performing sectionals. All right, anything else? All right, we will adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Um, Scott.